And good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Council meeting. I like to call and we'll begin this evening with a moment of and pledge of allegiance led by Deputy Mayor Schultz.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to take a moment to recognize that this month is February. It is Black History Month. It is this evening that we will be further discussing, as we did last week, the potential for a Truth and Reconciliation Commission. It's it's part of our ongoing effort to improve the lives of of all those in our our borough by by lifting all and by addressing those historical ills that we've had in in our society for 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 many centuries. It's a it's a large mountain to climb. We're taking one step at a time, but I want to take a moment to for for us to pause and think about all of those who have marched this path long before before we have. And now the punch. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Ramsey.
Here.
Mr. Hicks.
Here.
Ms. Landis.
Here.
Mr. Schultz.
Here.
Mayor Scott.
Here.
And Mr. Stube.
Here.
My form is present, and I'll turn things over to Councilman Joel Hicks for a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I do want to confirm with Borough Manager Armstrong that everyone is present here for the hearing.
I am looking at the attendees. I know that the attorney was to be present this evening. He was in contact with Solicitor Brenneman. Did you receive any notice of all kids?
Both the attorney and the client are here.
Yes, sir.
Okay, great. Thank you. Well, in that case, th- this is similar to what we did last week. We we had a transfer of liquor license that we had a public hearing. In this case, Borough Council is may hold a hearing on today at seven for the purposes of receiving public comment on a proposed local economic development liquor license request by Pompeyes Incorporated for use at a restaurant to be located at or near the corner of A Street and Carlisle Springs Road, North Side Village. I would say I I think the things that the council will consider are similar to the things we would consider in a inter-county transfer and like to open up to the public before we do, but have the representative from Pompeyes to address everyone. Thank good evening. The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you very much. This is Jim Petrascu. Good evening to everyone, Mayor Scott, council members. I'm representing Alfredo Yanusi and his restaurant business that he plans on opening Pompey Restaurant. And again, thank you for the opportunity to allow us to come before you this evening. Alfredo and his wife Alicia are the owners of Marcello's Restaurant and Pizzeria located on Calvary Road. As many of you are aware, Marcello's is a very nice restaurant with very good food, providing such dishes as veal, baked pasta, appetizers, and of course pizza and subs, and each even has its own menu for the children. It's Alfredo's desire to open another family-owned restaurant in Carlisle to be located at the former site of IAC and Maslin Maslin plants before that, at the corner of A Street and Carlisle Springs Road. The new restaurant will be a little more upscale from Marcello's, offering entrees of steaks, seafoods, Italian baked specialty dishes, brick oven pizzas, and will still be all homemade and all from the family-owned business. It's Alfredo's hope and desire that he will be able to offer beverage alcohol drinks to accompany his food offerings. But in order to do that, as I'm sure you are most aware, if not all of you, he will have to acquire a restaurant liquor license from the Liquor Control Board. We're here this evening to specifically request permission from the Carlisle Borough to allow a restaurant liquor license to be issued by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board and placed into the new restaurant Pompey at A Street and Carlisle Springs Road. Alfredo will be applying to the PLCB for an economic development license, or what we call an EDR license, for placement into this location for the purpose of economic development. But before he can apply, he must first be granted permission from the Borough in the form of a resolution. Our request is made in accordance with a specific Pennsylvania liquor code statute. And that permits the liquor board to issue such licenses into specific municipalities like Carlisle Borough if approved by the governing body. This requires a public hearing or meeting for what's we're here this evening. The Borough can approve our request upon a finding of a couple of things. One, that the location and the issuance of this license from the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board into Carlisle Borough will promote economic development into the Borough of Carlisle. Also, the issuance, excuse me, to Alfredo and Pompey for this restaurant will not be detrimental to the Carlisle Borough community, to the health, peace, and morals specifically of the community. And let me assure everyone that Pompey holding a license at that location will not be detrimental to the community. In fact, contrary to that, it will promote upscale dining. It will bring people into the community to seek out this restaurant. This will not be what we all may know of when we think of a problem licensed establishment. There will not be any DJs. There will be no dance floors. There will be no live bands and things of that nature. This will be a restaurant with the alcoholic beverage service to complement the food. Provided we're fortunate enough to be approved by council, the resolution will be and has to be submitted with a PLCB application. The first step of the process after our appearance this evening. And again, if we're fortunate enough to be granted approval. The PLCB after application will conduct a very thorough investigation. They will themselves schedule a very formal hearing where evidence and testimony will be presented both by the Liquor Control Board and by also Alfredo. If the PLC approves the application, it will issue a new license to Alfredo for Pompey. The issuance of this license will be outside of the municipal quota that we are all aware of. The quota is for restaurant liquor licenses into a municipality. The quota is one per every 3,000 inhabitants of the municipality. Right now Carlisle has a quota of six. It currently has 14 licenses that count against the quota. So Carlisle, like most other municipalities across the state, is over quota. Of course, it will require a substantial fee paid by Alfredo at the time of application. And like any license holder, Alfredo and Pompey will have to abide by very strict statutory requirements and regulatory requirements. And they will be policed by not only the community members and Borough Council. I'm sure we'll keep their eyes open to watch how things go, as well as the local police department. But they will also be policed for liquor violations by the Pennsylvania State Police, its Bureau of Liquor Control Enforcement. One of the strict requirements with regards to these licenses is that 50%, let me say, no more than 50% of alcohol sales can be made when compared to sales of food and non-alcohol sales at the restaurant. If and that's checked every year, either through the renewal or validation process at the Liquor Control Board. And that must be confirmed every year by Alfredo and the numbers that his restaurant creates. If at any time his liquor sales would go over 50% of his sales volume, there would be an independent investigation by the Liquor Control Board. And if it is found to be confirmed that liquor sales are over 50% of sales, then the license would be canceled. So these licenses are created and made available for economic development. And they're for restaurants. They're not for local corner bars or things like that. There's also a requirement that we have to attempt to purchase licenses within the community. And part of that is that we have to reach out to a certain percentage of license holders to Cumberland County. We have already done that. We have reached out to more than is required at the Liquor Control Board through its regulations. Because of the pandemic that we're all involved in, it's our plan to continue to seek license a license out up until the time of application to the Liquor Control Board. Just a little background on the restaurant itself. Pompey is planned to be approximately 5,000 square feet in size. It will open for lunch and dinner seven days a week. It will offer hours during the weekdays from 10:00 AM until 11:00 PM and on the weekends from 10:00 AM until midnight. The seating will support approximately 60 tables. There will also be an upscale standing bar with approximately 15 seats there. There also will be outside dining and seating there for the customers. Alfredo's will employ approximately 30 people. And when he and I discuss this, he feels that it will probably be employing more people than that. All of the staff there will be what's called ramp trained. It's ramp is an acronym for Responsible Alcohol Management Program, and that's a program that's supervised by the Liquor Control Board. And it requires certain servers and owners and managers of licensed establishments be certified and trained in responsible alcohol service and and management. All of Alfredo's employees will be trained. They will have to be recertified every two years. And any hires he makes will be certified within 90 to 180 days. This will continue to be a family-owned business, and it will be be continue to serve us the homemade dishes that we all enjoy when we go there to eat. This is pretty much all the information I have for you tonight. If you have any questions, please ask them, and I'll be glad to answer them. Alfredo is also here, and he will be glad to answer questions if I can. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Petrascu, for that background. Before I turn it over to council, I'd like to open it up for public comments. Anyone from virtually or in person?
We don't have anyone here at Borough Hall who would like to comment.
That's good to hear.
And if you want to comment virtually, you would need to raise your hand in Zoom. Looks like we don't have any comments.
In that case, I'd like to turn it over to my colleagues on council if they have any questions for their counsel. If if not, I'll just say I'm just a point source, but living only a few hundred yards from where this is going up and fairly familiar with establishments. I my guess is that economic development is is going to happen at that location. So I will be very surprised if that box doesn't get checked based on the criteria we went over. And I I can say for myself, I'm I'm looking forward to these types of establishments popping up in our side of our side of the borough and look forward to going in and doing my duty potentially as council to make sure you're complying with with the rules. But I I don't know if we have any other questions before we close out the hearing.
As an A Street resident, I'm for it.
Yeah.
Thank you, Member Landis. Thank you, Member Hicks.
You know where I stand, so I'm with you.
Thank you very much.
If you don't mind, I have a question of the applicant's attorney.
Certainly.
I just want to confirm that your client is willing to pay the borough's costs in advertising the hearing and the presence of the stenographer, as well as any legal fees.
Absolutely.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome, Attorney Brenneman.
Okay. If there are no further questions, that that concludes the public hearing. We'll we'll wait until regular section to vote on this, but without objection, we will conclude this hearing.
Thank you very much, Member Hicks and Council and Mayor Scott. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that closes out our hearing. Next up, if we have some presentations from Police Chief Landis and also Fire Chief Snyder. So Chief Chief Landis, you're first on my list here, so the floor is yours, sir. Don't fix these things in editing, so it's okay.
I can't see me. Okay, there we go. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of Borough Council, members of the public. I'm going to go a little bit out of order here for the awards. And I want you to understand that the first awards are for Officer of the Year. Members of the Carlisle Police Department, NCOs, sergeants and corporals will vote every year for officers that did an outstanding job. From the year from 2019, we had two officers that did a really outstanding work. As I said, due to COVID, we were facing a situation that we've never faced before. So we did not have an award ceremony earlier. So we're one year behind, so these awards are for the year of 2019. I hope to be before you to present 2020 after we vote, elect, and check the statistics for that year. For 2019, Officers of the Year, Officer Jamie D. Martell. There we go. You'll see that the little plaques you get, they'll also will wear a ribbon on their uniform and their dress uniform. The second Officer of the Year for the year 2019, Officer Timothy Mayer. Both officers, I have to tell you, are like rock stars as far as there to volunteer for anything that comes along the pike. A few years ago, these two officers gathered presents for kids who were needy of presents for Christmas. These two officers at a party for the Biggs in Blue and a lot of people from Community Cares in getting presents for them. The police department appeared like Santa's workshop. Both these officers have distinguished themselves on the road as saving people's lives in different situations. So well-deserved, Officer D. Martell and Officer Timothy Mayer to present to you as Officer of the Year for year 2019. Your applause, please. The next award that we're going to present tonight are actually citizen awards to citizens of Carlisle Borough who did something outstanding. And with that, soon to be my fourth year here, and I've got to tell you that Carlisle is an outstanding community. We have more people here trying to do good and trying to do what's right than most places. The first presentation is awarded to Mr. John Rudy. On January 7th, approximately 1:30 AM, there was a single car accident in intersection of East Willow Street and South Beveridge Street. Due to the damage of the vehicle, there was a high likelihood of fire, and the fire would have consumed the lone senior citizen occupant. Acting with little concern for his own personal safety, he extracted the driver, assisted in extracting the driver prior to first responders arriving to scene. Your efforts allowed the vehicle occupant to see a new day. On behalf of the Carlisle Police Department, we wish to thank you for your meritorious effort saving the life a life in the Borough of Carlisle. Mr. Rudy, if you're out there in TV land, thank you very much. Sincerely from the heart. The next two awards are actually from the same incident or a correction from a separate incident, but but a life-saving award, the same to Miss Winifred Green and Anton Williford. On January 16th, 2021, approximately 9:30 PM, members of the Carlisle Police Department responded to the 100 block of Northwest Street in the Borough of Carlisle for a mortal vehicle accident involving entrapment and fire. One of the vehicles came to rest on its side and was smoking. Carlisle citizens, Anton Williford and Winifred Green heard the crash and came to the rescue of the unconscious vehicle operator. Again, with little concern for their personal safety, these two citizens broke out the sunroof with a hammer, used a knife to cut the seatbelt and extracted the vehicle occupants prior to first responders getting there. On behalf of the Carlisle Police Department and the Borough of Carlisle, we wish to thank you for your meritorious efforts in saving the life of a borough resident. Thank both of you. Due to COVID, you will get your rewards delivered to you by a police officer in the very near future. The next award, Citizen Service Award. Excuse me, again, technical difficulties. Citizen Service Award to Mr. Stein. If you remember, at the beginning of this global pandemic, N95 masks were in short supply. The Carlisle Police Department was in need of of mask protection for our officers to continue providing services to the citizens of the borough. On April 25th, 2020, you donated 200 N95 masks to the police department. Because of your selfless donations, our officers were a lot safer. Please accept this Citizen Service Award from a very grateful Carlisle Police Department. It's a sincere appreciation. Thank you, Mr. Stein. The next award is Sherry Sherthak, a Carlisle resident. On May 13th, 2020, approximately 5:00 PM, you were on South Hannibal Street and Chestnut Avenue when you observed the subject experiencing some sort of medical emergency. The subject fell to the ground, unconscious, and in falling struck his head, causing a large laceration with a lot of blood. You took the time to stop and assist the injured subject, rendering a calming voice until the paramedics arrived. Again, for Sherthak, I happened to be there when this person fell and witnessed your aid to the citizen. And again, on behalf of the grateful police department and the Borough of Carlisle, thank you very much for getting involved. And our last citizen award, and Mr. Gordon told me he does not Zoom. This one in particular is very different. On March 6th, 2020, you found a wallet containing a large amount of money. The Carlisle Police Department is recognizing you with the Citizen Service Award for turning in the wallet to the police department, which allowed us to unite the money with its rightful owner. Mr. Gordon, we are very thankful for honest citizens in this day and age to come out and give money, return money for wallet that didn't belong to you. Thank you very much. This concludes my presentation. And again, I will tell you that we will deliver your presentation to you. Don't be alarmed when the police car pulls up in front of your house. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief, and relations to your outstanding officers and also our outstanding citizens as well. It's always a pleasure to experience this with you. Chief Snyder is here now, and Chief, I believe you have a video?
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor. What we're going to do is we'll show the video clip. We presented these awards on Tuesday. It was a Medal of Merit to EMT Grace Snyder and 12 unit citations to members of the Union Fire Company, Carlisle Fire Rescue at Carlisle Barracks for rescue of a seven-year-old girl trapped in a gun safe. So Stephanie, if you would go ahead and start that, we'll show the presentation.
Good afternoon. Today, we're here to recognize EMT Grace Snyder and present her with the Medal of Merit for her actions on January the 7th, when she was responding to a vehicle accident with fire and possible entrapment in the area of 100 East Willow Street. EMS arrived on the scene, fully involved vehicle, the driver still in the vehicle. EMT Grace Snyder and citizen John Ruby removed the individual from the vehicle under heat and flame conditions. Grace is also a member of the Carlisle Fire Rescue and North Middleton Volunteer Fire Companies. We, as first responders, have the ability to make a positive impact on those that are having the worst day of their life. They expect us to respond quickly with a sense of urgency. They want a skill set. They want us to know what we're doing, and they want us to be friendly. Grace, thank you and may you continue to serve with honor, integrity and courage. Carlisle Fire Department, Borough of Carlisle, recognition of service and action to sustain human life. Thus contributing to the public safety, hereby confirms the Medal of Merit to EMT Grace Snyder. For selfless actions demonstrated during the rescue of an individual from a burning vehicle. Which occurred in the 100 block of East Willow Street on January the 7th, 2021. Hereby assigned and sealed by the Mayor of Carlisle, Lieutenant Scott, Fire Chief Jeff Snyder. Attorney General Armstrong. Citation. And your Medal of Merit.
Thank you. On behalf of Carlisle Borough Council and Mayor Scott. We just want to thank you so much for your courageous and selfless act.
On January the 7th at 16:41 hours, units were dispatched for a seven-year-old child trapped in a gun safe in the area of East North Street. First arriving officer, Chief Hinkin met with the father and estimated the time of the child within fifteen minutes. Working as a team, giving fire company, Carlisle Fire Rescue, Carlisle Fire Department. Using rubbery saw, the hydraulic rescue tools successfully removed the child within ten minutes of arrival time. We as first responders have the ability to make a positive impact on those that are having the worst day of their life. We are to respond quickly with a sense of urgency. We need a skill set, know what we're doing and we need to be friendly. We're a family. We know that the fire service is a man, a job, a career, a long period. It's a lifestyle. A lifestyle that's not always convenient, a lifestyle that is always difficult with family members that will be by home for shift work. Starting to emerge incidents, meetings and trains. We as firefighters have a lifestyle that's based on the virtue of self-respect. Concerned with the wellbeing of others as such as you are. You're part of the family that finally purpose to serve and contribute to the community. I want to thank you for the job and dedication. Continue to serve with honor, integrity and courage. Thank you.
Well, first and foremost, thank you on behalf of Carlisle Borough Council, Mayor Scott, myself, the board of this community. This community knows what a gem we have here with our volunteer fire partnership.
Just like to say. I'd just like to say thank you to Stephanie for for putting that together. And again, my thank you to those members of the fire bureau and the stations for their actions and to EMT Grace Snyder. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief. Another wonderful ceremony. I want to thank all of our first responders for the great work that they do. Deputy Mayor Schultz, you're your first responder. Any any thoughts or comments?
Just just that it's not a shock to me that knowing knowing all those people that they were the right people in the right place, the right time with the right training. And and with the right mentors, I think they'll all all say and it. I think they'd all also say that they can do what they do because they know there's a there's a team behind them supporting them. So everybody's incredibly impressive and and if I sort of take a moment to to talk about Grace especially. I mean, that video, as as I think many of us have seen over and over again. Is is pretty pretty inspiring that she she ran into that. And that was all because of every all the 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 efforts that she put into her. I think four plus years at this point as a junior and 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 now as a senior firefighter. And and just so I I can't say enough about Grace and she comes off as such a humble person. So so thank you all for for everything you do.
Thank you Deputy Mayor. And now moving on, we have some guests this evening under opportunity for citizens to be heard. We are very fortunate to be joined by a group of young leaders, future leaders actually, Boy Scout Troop 302. From the capital city of Harrisburg and we are joined also by their assistant leader Alex Pittsner. Mr. Pittsner, would like to say a few words.
It looks like Mr. Pitts, we have a Gregory Pittsner. If you want to raise your hand if that's who wants to talk.
That's fine.
Alex was on earlier, but he seems to have disappeared. Hi Gregory, unmute.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes, this is Mr. Pittsner. I'm I'm a driving Gregory, so we're on his phone together. But I as a representative of Troop 302, we're very thankful to be able to participate in this meeting. It will help a number of our scouts achieve their citizenship in the Community Merit Badge. This is one of the requirements. So I just wanted to on behalf of 302, I'd again like to thank you all for letting us participate.
Absolutely. Come back anytime.
Thank you.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, the following is a list of routine items. Which do not appear to be controversial in nature and which probably not require additional discussion. Practices, they can be acted on in one motion in their current form. If discussion is desired on any particular item. Any member of council or the public may request that that item be removed and we will consider it separately. So my question to council, is there any item on the consent agenda that anyone wishes to be discussed separately? Right? Anyone from the public wish to have council consider an item separately on the consent agenda? Again, these are items on pages two. Items on page two. All right, hearing none. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Deputy Mayor Schultz, is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Council Landis. Any any discussion on this? Hearing none. I'll call the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And again, that's everything on page two. Moving on to the regular agenda, there are no tabled continued or recurring items. Next up is Mayor's report. I have no report this evening. So we'll move into reports from committee and first up is economic development.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two motions this evening for council, but first, a couple of things. One, I just personally like to thank. DCA and Glenn White and his leadership for what I think was. A very needed, good, good event this weekend that that got folks out of the house with. The Ice Fest and 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 got some business to where it was needed badly and I think in a very safe way and that. That was no easy task. And I really appreciate his effort and his team's effort. Before I get to my my motions, I have a without objection, a request for a borough manager. So based on comments and concerns I have received from several mostly small business owners. About the disaggregated approach to to business development highlighted by a number of innovative but coordinated. Highlighted by a number of innovative but uncoordinated ideas circulated by Carlisle's business organizations during the pandemic. I'd like to encourage borough staff to recommend to council. A better way to move forward in how we promote and coordinate activities between and amongst our business community. For instance, we have three highly visible and effective organizations, the Chamber of Commerce, Downtown Carlisle Association. Destination Carlisle that collectively reach across our entire commercial sector. However, client voices often don't get shared between these groups and well, that that's that's a problem. We also could benefit from a more structured relationship with groups such as Cumberland Area Economic Development Corp Corporation, KDEC. And Cumberland County Housing and Redevelopment Authority. I believe we need a way to collectively integrate our business group's interests that is both strategic and inclusive. And this is particularly important as we attempt to recover from one of the most catastrophic crises that has hit our borough. I would recommend as a first step that staff consider surveying local businesses. To understand how they would like their local government to be more responsive. And maybe perhaps less responsive. This outreach could then help inform a more inclusive way for the borough to make informed business-related decisions. I would recommend staff report back in three months on their findings with recommendations. Of how to better organize our Economic Development Committee. A currently ambiguous organization of which I am the chair.
Without objection, as Chair of Economic Development. Appreciate your thoughts and I'm sure staff was taking notes and we'll report back soon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Borough Manager. And look forward to working with you on that. So two, two. Motions tonight. We did have earlier a public hearing. But I, based on the results of that, I I move that Borough Council. Approve a resolution for proposed local economic development liquor license request by Pompey Incorporated. For use at a restaurant to be located at or near the corner of A Street and Carlisle Springs Road, North Side Village.
Mr. Hicks makes a motion to approve a resolution for a proposed local economic development liquor license. Is there a second?
I second that as a as a third council member who's a stone's throw away from the the site and can actually see the site from my from my back window here.
Alright, so we got some geographicness going on here. Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And and my final. Motion this evening is that I I move that and this requires a roll call vote. I I move that Borough Council enact an ordinance approving an agreement. Between the Redevelopment Authority of Cumberland County and the Borough of Carlisle. To include but not limited to the continuance of leasing of office space, parking and basic services in in the Borough Hall. Agreement shall be retroactive January 1st of this year, 2021 to December 31st, 2021.
Mr. Hicks makes a motion to enact an ordinance approving an agreement between the Redevelopment Authority of Cumberland County and the Borough of Carlisle. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? We've worked with this organization a long time and happy it's going to continue. Hearing no further through the discussion, all those in favor, please say, oh, sorry, this is a roll call vote. Madam Secretary, if you please.
Mr. Cramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Can I come through? Aye.
Got it. Mayor Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Stube?
Aye.
Motion carries seven to zero. Thank you, everyone.
And Mr. Mayor, that concludes my report this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. ERCP, Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two items this evening. Before getting into those, I did just want to give an update. That last week, as many of you know, at our workshop meeting, we had a public discussion. On a proposed Truth and Reconciliation Commission Resolution, a resolution that would establish a commission. And receive public comment on that. Based on that discussion and comment, we have posted the resolution on the borough's website for public to view. And we tentatively have it scheduled to be voted on and considered at our March 11th Borough Council meeting. Between now and then, anyone is welcome to contact. It'll be open for public comment, so individuals are welcome to attend that meeting and and share their thoughts at that point too. But as to the two motions I have tonight, first, I move that Mr. John Abom be appointed to a partial term. On the Carlisle Borough Historical Architectural Review Board. The term will become effective immediately and shall expire December 31st, 2023.
Mr. Stube makes a motion to appoint Mr. John Abom to a partial term on the Borough's Historical Architectural Review Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item?
Just that Mr. John Abom is better known as Jay Abom for those who who know.
That can be confusing. All right, I'll I'll call the question. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
And next I move that Borough Council appoint Mr. Jared Wilson to serve as a high school student liaison to the Parks and Recreation Board. This term will become effective immediately and shall expire June 3rd, 2022.
Mr. Stube makes a motion to appoint Mr. Jared Wilson to serve as our high school liaison on the Borough's Parks and Recreation Board. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this item? We do have a high school member on our Parks and Rec. That is one of the little things that people don't know, but yeah. And programs gone on for a while. It works very well. Hearing no further comments. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That concludes my report.
All right, public safety is up next. I move that council adopt a resolution. Adopting the Cumberland County Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update for 2020.
My second?
Second. All right. Thank you. Motion has been made and seconded. For staff, just like a brief couple sentences on what this is. Now, I know, but.
Sure, Mayor. Mayor, this is Chief Snyder.
Hi, Chief.
So Mark Mallory and I served on the Steering Committee in early 2019. And we did an assessment on natural or man-made disastrous pandemics for the borough. Based on the probability, the impact, warning times, duration. And then the county compiles that from all municipalities. And then we reviewed their findings in the the fall. And then they had a public hearing on that and their plan was approved by FEMA. And the Pennsylvania Emergency Management, EZPIMA. And the financial impact to us would be that if we don't approve the resolution or the plan, we could. Not maybe receive some federal funding in the mitigation areas if the county receives funds.
Therefore, that is very important, which is why I urge everyone to pray yes, vote. All right, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And my final item, I move that council approved purchase of two 2021 hybrid police interceptor utility vehicles. Total cost for vehicle purchase uplifting and striping $100,000. Is there a second?
I second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion on this purchase? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. That ends my report and we turn to Public Works. Ms. Landis.
Thank you. I make the motion that Borough Council authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form. For a connection to the borough sanitary sewer system for the proposed long and CHW. Three lot subdivision to be located between Wilson Street and Bellwoodir Street, north of Hillside Drive.
Ms. Landis makes a motion for council to authorize the signing of a PA. Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Deputy Mayor Schultz. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Alright, I make a motion that Borough Council authorize the mayor to sign the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection Sewage Facilities Planning Module Exemption Form. For a connection to the borough sanitary sewer system for the proposed four-unit townhomes development to be located at 614 through 620 Walnut Street.
Ms. Landis makes additional motion similar to first involving the signing of a sewage facilities planning module exemption form. But for a property, properties at 614 through 620 Walnut Street. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries.
Alright, and I make a motion that Borough Council enter into an an engineering services contract for a not to exceed cost of $64,600. With Gannett Fleming Incorporated to provide design services for replacement of finished water mains from the water. With Gannett Fleming Incorporated to provide design services for replacement of finished water mains from the water treatment plant to Basin Hill Res Wars. As part of the Borough's twenty twenty-one Water Distribution System Rehabilitation Program, subject to Borough Solicitor approval of the contract.
Ms. Landis makes a motion for Council to enter into an engineering contract. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Motion carries.
And my last motion for the evening, I make the motion that Borough Council. Adopt an ordinance providing for the acceptance of the portion of East Baltimore Street from South Spring Garden Street East. To the Borough's border with South Middleton Township and other, and other public infrastructure constructed. By Carlisle United Methodist Church as part of the Carlisle United Methodist Church Land Development Plan.
Ms. Landis makes a motion for Council to adopt an ordinance providing for the acceptance of a public street. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion has been made and properly seconded. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
I think there's going to be a roll.
It's a roll call, though.
It's a roll call. Okay. See, again, we'll fix that in editing. Madam Secretary, please call the roll.
Mr. Cramsey?
Aye.
Mr. Hicks?
Aye.
Ms. Landis?
Aye.
Mr. Schultz?
Aye.
Mayor Scott?
Aye.
And Mr. Stube.
Aye.
Motion passes seven to one.
And that completes my report.
Thank you. That's it for the regular agenda. Moving now to new business. This is an opportunity for citizens who would like to address Borough Council on any matter relating to Borough Government.
We should have someone in house who would like to speak.
Please step forward and we will need your name and address and please keep your comments to under five minutes.
This is Connie Byers. I don't know if you can see me.
Hi, Connie. Your address?
Very good. I'm going to just say that I live in the, pardon. I'm going to say that I live in the borough. I think.
Connie, we, this is, this is.
I have no idea of the address of anyone on council. No one ever.
Well, no, this has been our practice for a while. E- even when you were on council, we did this. We ask everybody to do this.
But it's, it's a thought that I'm having and I'm just going to pursue it for the moment. If you don't mind.
Well, I do, but go ahead.
Last month, I spoke at the. January Borough Council meeting and on the resolution. That was part of the mayor's report to, that supports allowing for municipalities throughout Pennsylvania to enact their own minimum wage legislation. I sort of want to revisit that and express a concern regarding that. My concern is regarding the participation, quite frankly, of you, Sean Cramsey, in this. Your bio, your description on your, on the borough's website indicates you're lobbyist and I'm quite confident that you are a lobbyist. And do lobbying for the Association of Pennsylvania State College and University of Faculty. The website of that organization. Indicates that you're Director of Government Relations in the Government and Public Relations Department. And one of the legislative goals and priorities, which I'm going to guess that you were involved in. Is to work in solidarity with the labor movement. To preserve and expand workers' rights, e.g., guaranteeing exclusive representation. Maintaining the prevailing wage, protecting the collection of union dues and supporting the raising of the minimum wage. I don't honestly know if your employer is a for-profit organization or a nonprofit organization, and that has some bearing. But anyway, I just think that in the spirit of the Ethics Act. It would have been appropriate for you to have recused yourself. And not been involved in the presentation and the promotion and voting on this. And it's not that I disagree with it. I just think that seems like you're bringing your concerns from work and presenting them. As something here for the borough and I think that is something that. The Ethics Act would like speaks against. So anyway, I think. And I think the ethics are important. They are important on the face of it. And it's also the case that you're, all of your constituents, which is everyone in the borough. They, they want to have confidence in the integrity of their elected officials in all matters of public decision making and, and that's. Why I just wanted to express that concern.
Mr. Mayor.
In addition.
Because.
The resolution was not going to go any.
Council's integrity has been, is at least being attempted to be impugned here and, and I don't think we need to hear that any further. I know what the, the answer is, but I think Solicitor Brenneman is ready to step in. And I know this, the, the, what Mr. Cramsey did by proposing that, that support. Doesn't even come close to a violation of the Ethics Act, nor the spirit of the Ethics Act. But Solicitor Brenneman, I think you're ready.
I, I was ready. You're absolutely right. There is absolutely no violation of the Ethics Act by Councilmember Cramsey. I'm going to make that perfectly clear. I normally, as you all know, I normally don't jump in to any conversation, let alone a public comment. But I felt compelled to do so in this case. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you Solicitor Sean for that. I'll, I'll just add, I mean, I, I've been in my. Professional position for about four years now and never once. Does my professional role ever interfere or interact with my role in council. This is a local government issue. I personally felt strongly about it. Every member on council had the opportunity to vote against it. It's not me forcing or crossing paths. It was done outside of work hours and it was not done. As, as I think the Solicitor and Sean mentioned, there's, there's no ethic, ethic involvement. I don't, I don't benefit from, from bringing up an idea that I think would benefit. Our residents who I'm, I'm voted, I was voted in to represent those residents. I can provide the, you know, Connie, I can provide you data on. What the minimum wage looks like here locally. But that doesn't impact anything I do professionally or on council, so thank you.
And also for members of the public, each elected member of Borough Council files a statement of financial ethics every year. And that is a public document that anyone can have access to that shows you who we all work for. And if we receive any money from any lobbyists in the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania. So all that information is out there. You just have to ask for the document. Okay.
And I'm just, I'm just going to put one more note in here and that's that. You know, it's been said that this is not an ethical violation and that is correct. But also each one of us do come with our own perspectives, our own experiences, our own education and things that we've learned from our positions. That doesn't mean it's an advocacy for something. I lean on lots of folks here on council because of their expertise in other areas that I don't know about. It's not all in government work. It's about maybe some of the work that they do. But sometimes they do overlap. It's not a financial concern. They're not benefiting from giving help and, and thoughtful opinions. So I do want folks to know that like each one of us come here with something to offer and, and we don't. You know, this is not our only job. And so we do, you know, come with, you know, some sort of position. So. And I think that that's actually very helpful to, to know that there's a wide array of education and. And experiences up here and we, we appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Any further comment from the public? Okay. Alright, as we do, we will go around the room and take reports from council members and staff. And since our student ambassador came in late, we'll go ahead and recognize SBR first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Apologies for the tardiness. Updates on my end, as folks may have noticed, students have returned to campus. We just had the second wave of move-ins this last weekend. So that means that students are still under a stay at home slash stay on campus order through the weekend. If you're seeing them walking around in groups, they've been instructed to stay only with their pods and of course masked at safe distances, et cetera. So. In addition to the twice a week testing, the college is really trying to minimize any kind of risk that the students could bring to the community. And of course continuing respectful, safe and healthy guidelines to make sure that students and community members can continue to coexist in good ways. On the arts, civic and public arts project front that I've been working on, we're hoping to move forward with. The idea of a policy or program that would support a percentage for the arts. And that's still in the works, hoping to continue to work with folks at the borough and of course the. Incredible team of involved arts workers and coordinators in the community. On the land acknowledgement project front as I brought up at the workshop last week. That is continuing and I've started working with some other folks on that, which is very exciting. We're still in the phases of getting feedback. From indigenous nations as well as historians who are experts in the events that took place in our community and of course continue to affect indigenous people. So we want to make sure that that language is completely approved by those most affected by those realities before we present it to the borough. Hoping that that can be on the agenda at the March meeting. And I believe that that is all the updates from me. If you want to hear more about any of those projects or work together, do not hesitate to reach out. And thank you so much.
Thank you, SBR. Mr. Hicks?
Good evening. May I have nothing additional, additional for council this evening? Thanks.
Alright, thank you, sir. Mr. Cramsey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening again, everyone. I just wanted, I had a few quick things tonight. Wanted, wanted to again. Thank staff and all department heads for, for all the work that they always do, but especially continuing to deal with, with COVID. And then adding on top of that, the recent snowstorm that we did have and, and the snow that we had again yesterday. It's great to see our crews out. And about with, with masks on and practicing safety. And I think, you know, we, we just want to applaud all those folks. For, for continuing to do the hard work that they're doing in challenging times. Thanks.
Thank you, Sean. Councilor Landis?
I don't have too much to offer, but I do want to just reiterate what Counselor Hicks noted earlier with. The Great Ace Fest this weekend. It was, it was tremendous and it was just a, a little taste of almost normalcy. Little bit. It was close and it was really nice and everyone, I mean, all the work that went into it, I can't even imagine, but thank you.
You. Mr. Stube?
I have nothing further this evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. And Deputy Mayor?
We, we accepted a number of resignations from, from board and commission members who have, it's, they've, they've chosen it's time for them to, to move on to, to other endeavors. But I wanted to note one in particular. It, it took a long time to, to get to the passage of the Human Relations Commission Ordinance. And Nancy Gregor was the inaugural chair of that, that commission. And I, I know when we, we interviewed for folks on that commission, it was, it was clear, we had a number of well qualified. People for those positions, but it was clear that Nancy was the right, right person. From, from the start, I mean, within minutes of, of the beginning of her, her interview. And so I, I, I know she's not, she's not here with us tonight and I'm going to find a moment to, to reach out to her and thank her for everything that she did. Putting that commission together, getting it up and running from, from nothing. We, we've never had anything like it before in the borough. And I, I can't, I can't tell you how, how appreciative I, I am of what she did from the beginning with that commission.
Thank you, sir. Now we'll move on to staff. Borough Manager Armstrong?
I just echo the same sentiments as Deputy Mayor Schultz regarding Nancy Gregor's leadership on HRC. She was able to take an ordinance and implement it, implement every part of it. The bylaws to the form letters to how the intake process would occur. And of course she was surrounded with the others. Very talented individuals on the HRC who are volunteering their time. But she was so, she will be sorely missed and. We just thank her for, you know, stepping up and being willing to share her time like she did. Thank you.
Yes, we were lucky to find her for that capacity. Solicitor Brenneman, anything, sir?
I have no report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Chief Snyder?
No, so, Mayor. No additional information.
Alright, public information. Ms. Taylor?
I have nothing tonight.
Alright. Owen Snyder, Assistant Borough Manager?
No, I have anything tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Landis?
Yes, sir. Just a reminder of the French Toast Connection. Tomorrow, Carlisle Bridge Builders, along with leaders from Bible Way, Shiloh, Bethel AMA, Second Presbyterian. The Carlisle Police Department volunteers in the community will be giving away food in eggs, bread and milk, thus the French Toast Connection. From three to five tomorrow. If you're available to help volunteer, to help give out food or stuff bags. Anywhere after I say twelve thirty or so, either one of those locations can stuff bags. The, the items come from project share disassembled, so some assembly is required. We look forward to seeing you. Thank you, sir.
You. And as Chief noted, if you'd like to volunteer, just show up at one of those church locations. We'll be happy to put you to work. Uh, Community Development, Mike Skelly?
Good evening. Nothing to offer.
Thank you, sir. Public Works, Mark Mallory.
I have nothing further for council this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Parks and Recreation, Andrea Kraus. Did she just, she just hopped off? Oh, there you are. You moved on me. That's where you were. You're muted. You're still muted. Alright, looks like she's muted and doesn't know how to take herself off mute. So while she's doing that, Richard, any, anything from the Finance Department?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Nothing tonight.
Okay. Looks like Andrea is still trying to work out her stuff.
We all know the struggle, Andrea. It's okay.
It is very much the struggle. It's usually down at the bottom, in the left-hand corner of the screen. Okay. Okay, well, I'm sure that what you have to say is probably in your report, but we, we do appreciate you as well. Alright, thank you, everybody. We are adjourned. See you next month.